At this point, we're gonna go into a motion to approve the consent agenda. Karen, I'm going to be very close myself in that part. Thank you.
Madam President, I make the motion we approve the consent agenda with the previous amendments.
Second, please second. May I say we discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Is no one else of this side's motion carry? Yeah. And at this point, we'll go into the unfinished business, the five-year strategic plan, the second board initiative.
Here, on the last meeting, the meeting before, you looked at first board initiative, student achievement, and it looks like those are in pretty good shape at this point. We've let a couple of meetings pass, and now we brought you the second board initiative, communication and collaboration. This is a draft. This is our best thinking of the goals, but we certainly, the purpose this evening is to get your direction for the move next with the second initiative. And then, if we were to finish that tonight or come pretty close, then we would bring the third board initiative to you at a later time on efficiency, safety, and infrastructure. But we really just need your direction tonight, discussion. We'll be listening and answering questions. And Dr. Carlin was a key factor in putting these together along with Roy Sessner. Madam President, open up the discussion a little bit.
Well, I did have some comments, and I thought I'd kind of start the discussion. I think this is really a critical board initiative. I think our communication, both within our district and with us to the community, it is very important. So I really like that we're focusing on this as one of the main three initiatives that we're doing. I had thought that maybe some of them, we could include the print media, the telegram, the sugar beans, especially with Board Three. And then I had also thought that we ought to incorporate maybe our iPad usage, since we have that available now at the high school level, that that would kind of get in with some of these because it would make it easier for students to contact their teachers or staff to contact each other. So I think that's kind of a digital component of that. So those were just a couple of the comments. Anything else that you would like to bring up?
I have a comment with regards to communication. I really appreciate how the Tony White use gets forwarded to all the staff. That's something that Dr. Eadie started doing like two years ago, on a regular basis.
Probably about them, and that was actually the direction of the board.
Yeah, I think that's, again, that's one of those things that we do communicate and we maybe forget that we do well. So I think that that's really important, and I think it's really helped the board's relationship with both classified certified staff, with the board and with the administration. So I definitely want to continue that piece as well.
One thing I think also that we talked about, I had already drawn it a few times here and there, about the end of 4.5, we continue the board administration faculty meetings in schools and classified advisory council meetings. We had also talked about doing department meetings as well, in addition to just the schools and the faculty for transportation and things like that. So people that we wouldn't necessarily see as much of being able to lose in contact with them. I know, I think Mark has grown enough on occasion, so I think that's a great idea. You know, I'd be interested in hearing if you would like to do this too. You know, they've made a lot of changes, been trying to get so many colors on the plate, get all your nutritional points and checklists. So I think that's a really good idea.
So what I'm getting is you'd like us to include transportation department, nutrition department, and maintenance, and security department. And we would schedule a meeting with maintenance, just like we scheduled a meeting with ROD and SISPA. Is that what I understand?
And, I'm sorry. Would nursing also be included in that, or do they come with the faculty meetings?
One way they've come to, that we could do also, we might be able to do, try to put our wellness program and nutrition and the nurses, we might be able to combine that in one meeting, but something like that.
I guess, long reply, my question was, should we include those individuals at their respective school in Board Doctor's meeting, or do we want to keep that focus on the five-year period?
One of the problems would be, like food service, would be that they would go home, maybe off the clock, or maybe one or two, one o'clock, and then they have to come back to the team. If we scheduled a time where we're gonna bring nutrition all together, there's a couple of times a year we bring nutrition together, that maybe we could be a part of that and add, you know, thirty minutes or a timeframe there that Tracy could give us.
I sort of like that idea because I think what we've seen in the recent past is we're moving towards more a district. I coordinated an overarching system as opposed to each school having their own sort of separate, distinct employee responsibilities. And I think being able to go to the nutrition department, because of our district-wide, we kind of have a broader view of what the issues are, discipline are. So I'm super glad that I could really see that in the district board. One of the things I was wondering about is, I know we, I have a funny interest in making sure that we're really getting a return on our investment in our BBS television and radio equipment and systems and all of that. And I want to make sure that, you know, the community, we're able to use that to communicate with the community and to provide information to the community. So I was kind of wondering, are we looking at having to add any additional hardware or equipment in that system? Or is it really more of a, we need more help or more staffing? Or what issues are we looking at to try to expand the use of those things?
Do you want to try to answer that?
I'm not sure that we can always add equipment. There's always a desire to have more options. But that's necessary. We did some upgrades when we moved into the new high school, so I think there's some things that are in very good position as far as where we're at technologically there. We added the capability to do high-definition with the equipment that was purchased for up there. I think it's gonna be more of a matter of just getting an organized plan for how we want to go about and what the priorities are. Staffing is probably gonna be an area, depending on how much we want to do and how much we can get kids involved with being involved in the production of video, probably more so than equipment. But I realize that the shelf life, the half-life of that technology equipment is not really long. So I'm sure there will be a point in the not-too-distant future where we'll be back wanting to talk about making sure we have appropriate equipment. But I think, Jean, the bigger issue's gonna be the manpower to be able to get things going and how we structure. And so as we develop the specifics of these goals, we'll probably be back to you with more information along that in the narratives that we put out. But I think I'm hearing you that this is a priority to make sure that we're getting programming on BBS, that we're using that resource efficiently to communicate with the public. There's a lot of things we can do today that if we produce that content, it's not exclusive to BBS. It can also be used on the internet, it can also be used through our digital signs that we have at the high school. And that's probably the direction that we're gonna be looking to go towards.
I'm really interested in seeing what kind of leadership potentially be possible out of that, that department, and not only from the faculty, but like you said, from the students and give them, you know, we've said tonight what students can do when they get empowered. So I agree that, you know, I'm not necessarily in favor of spending more money or putting more manpower there when we just, you know, eliminated seventeen positions. It's kind of hard to add one to a department at this point. But I really think that, like Jean said, let's utilize what we have and let's develop it to its full potential. I do, if there's anything else, anything else on that subject, I want to go back to what Laura suggested about, you know, listening to different departments, like transportation. You know, we have fifteen departments, and I sure don't want to exclude special education if they have, you know, something that they need to share with us. So I'm almost wondering, a suggestion, if we put out a blanket invitation to all fifteen departments and ask them if they have, you know, special interests that they would want to meet with us and maybe set a, you know, a block of time where we can just kind of have department by department. It would be kind of like program budgeting, but yet more of a personal interaction of communication so that we know firsthand what's going on.
We certainly could do that, but special ed is represented in the buildings.
Okay. So should we go through this list and make sure we've got everybody who would maybe not, like, transportation is good? What about curriculum?
We could, this will build it out in one class.
If you recall, in reference to the, some curriculum issues came up in the early childhood center. Kindergarten and first grade readiness came up in several faculty meetings that caused the board and the administration to look at what we were doing and how we were doing it, and became an issue that we tried to address. I do think that special ed is representative of buildings. I think curriculum would be my thinking of representing the buildings. Do you have a different thought, Dr. Eadie?
No, I don't. I think the issues that come out of that, we're well-informed on.
And you're so good.
And we hear what it is and try to respond to it either with what we're doing or develop and address it.
I'm just a little sensitive with Common Core and this whole transition. And, I mean, the last Tony White report that we got was all on Common Core. I mean, it's kind of, I don't know, it's a hot button topic. But I guess as long as we, I just don't want any department to feel like we handpicked somebody.
The answer I answered for Karen, Karen, do you have anything to add on that?
My teachers are all represented, and I've got need to definitely list them, but I think maybe ESE would.
Do you think I could probably get on?
Everybody, the building.
Have a building, you know, representation of ESE.
I think that's important because, I mean, part of this communication is also for us to get feedback and information and to be able to make better decisions because of that information. So I think that's a good way to go.
I just wanted to make sure everybody who wants to visit with us has a chance to visit with us. So I guess this is the open invitation right now. I mean, I just, I want activities to know that that's important to us, to, you know, keeping kids engaged in school because of their passion for whatever it's forensic debate, ROTC, whatever it is, I think that's really great. So I just don't want any department to feel like we hand-selected departments and let them go out. So that's all I can say.
On goal five, I was kind of wondering if there was any way to, these both deal with parent involvement in the school, so I'm trying to, I guess they kind of cover it, to really focus on welcoming the parents and family members of students we haven't traditionally seen or don't usually see in our schools. They may feel a little uncomfortable or reluctant to come into our schools. And maybe try to have some activities or, I know we've done a lot of different things, but maybe there are other things we could look at to try to bring in those people or to reach out to them and encourage them to become involved in their student's education.
I would say I look forward to seeing you bring us with activities or imagine with these categories, what the plans are.
The plan is to bring you narratives on an ongoing basis at a time and air as they relate to these various goals to demonstrate continuous improvement over the five-year period. That's what I would envision. And we, you're seeing, what you're seeing here is the departments that'll be responsible for these goals will appear over here by number, and there's a legend at the bottom identifying each of those departments, not by the name of the individual, but by the department themselves. And then on the far right, there'll be another column there of five years. And it'll be an opportunity for us to put an X in one of those five years if it should demonstrate that the board agrees that we have demonstrated improvement in that area. And so as we work with these over a five-year period, the goal would be to have a check in every one of those boxes over five years so that we incrementally improve in each of these areas. And our narratives would demonstrate that, our board presentations would demonstrate that. So you would see an orderly and in writing data coming to you to demonstrate that, and of course you would make the decision of whether we're hitting the mark or not hitting the mark. With the comments you would make after we give your presentation.
Kind of along what Jean was saying, and I did, I think it almost needs to be something more general and not just necessarily directed to specific groups, although I think we need to do that too. But I know, you know, I can still remember as a first-time parent thinking my son's kindergarten, not knowing what the heck I was doing and what was going to be expected and, you know, that type of thing. So I think anybody new to Garden City as well, or new to the school district, I think the garden around them goes a long way towards helping that. But making sure that it's not, that there's a general worldview as well.
And I don't want to over emphasize what this first grade ready program, pilot program, should do, but I really think that the communication that it has outlined as an objective between parents and teacher, I think sets a great foundation for starting these school kids off by basically educating the parent on how we need to communicate as a team on behalf of students. And I'm really anxious to see how this approach, this pilot program develops. And I'm, you know, it's neat that it's starting at that age so that we can see that grow. Because once we get those parents hooked and know that they can talk to the teacher and the principal and anyone in the school district, then hopefully that communication aspect will develop as well. I don't know if we can specifically write that, we've got parent engagement in elementary schools, but I think that's something that, you know, I'd almost like to really kind of monitor. You know, maybe do a parent survey that we can specifically address with regards to early elementary or something like that.
Also addresses community involvement as well as parent involvement, and yet the sub-goals really only look at parent involvement. So I think we really need to either add a sub-goal dealing with community involvement or re-align five, one and two to include the communities involved. Because I think there are different groups in our community that come into the schools and work with the students or present awards or do different things with our students. And I think our communication and coordination with them is really gonna be, continue to be a focus for us. So, you know, we, well, if we did that, we could sure do, you know, our Christmas partners in the community, right, what's on, as well as, you know, the access of the media. So we could put some goals to that, I might have pretty easily.
I was just letting them know we've got, you know, Freddy's, Freddy's is hosting, you know, or dinner tonight, and so everybody goes through, and that booster plug is a portion of the funds that are raised. A lot of it's just awareness. There's a lot going on that people just don't know about. So I think awareness thing out there would be great.
Jean, I think that's a great suggestion. We can add a sub-goal, but I think we have a lot of things going on with our youth achievement orders, we have mentoring groups that are working with our kids, there's strategies that we can look at or make expand. So we're definitely looking at some.
That would kind of round that out, so it really covers it. This is a really important goal.
We're heading in the right direction. So I mean, I did listen here to the notes, I'll add this, we'll bring it back to the adjustments that we actually were getting. Again, this is probably gonna be July, maybe in August before we get this to where we're going forward. So we're gonna get to see more graphs, probably more and more, to see what we've been rounding out. But this really will be a five-year, five-year look, to try to move the school district forward. In the direction of?
Well, looks like we can move on to new business, this is a negotiation, negotiated agreement.
That negotiated agreement is ratified by the teachers?
Yes, with the teachers overwhelmingly. And now it's, certainly recommend for the board to take action, approve.
I'd love to think, like Alex said before, he served as a board representative to that committee, that could be, that could be a time-consuming project as well as really rewarding, learn a lot. I did it a few years and I really appreciated it. So I'm gonna thank you for your time for that.
I'm really glad how smoothly it went this year. So, I know we had a full day set aside, and I think we were done by about one or two with all the major issues except for, well, that was the biggest one, the money. But we didn't know what the logistics later is going to be, so we had to hold off on that. This need to go through is, it's so helpful that the teachers understand where we are financially, and it just makes it easier. Again, I think that goes back to just keeping a warm heart, what's going on, is what it is.
Can I make a quick comment too? I'd like to thank Laura and Alex and prior board members that have been on negotiation. I think this was my eighth year with Kathleen, because that for twenty-five years. And certainly her leadership in that process has been invaluable, and this will be her last year of doing it, but I want to recognize, unless we bring her back just to do that. But I'm sure she's not gonna be disappointed that that's one of the things she's given up sometimes, it can be challenging. Past few years, it's went pretty well. Thank you.
Well, it really teaches you how to look at things differently. You know, is it ratifiable? And is it, you know, it's like, it's really a neat process to go through, which I encourage you to do.
Madam President, I'll make the motion that we approve the negotiated agreement for the 2013, 2014 two-year.
Second, or, then moved to the second, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Any of those? Okay, motion carry.
At this point, I was gonna ask for any comments or things that board members wanted to bring up. I did have a few things. I just wanted to remind people that starting today, the Books on the Bus program started, and also the Kids Meals on Wheels started with the company, the Bookmobile. And I got a message on my phone that the Myon program will start and that people in the community can call.
Eight oh five, seven oh five oh, that's the instruction office number. And get a login to get onto the program.
That's for the summer reading program, but do you need to be on the bus to access?
No, you can do it on any internet-connected device. Except Amazon, the Kindle Fire for some reason, won't work on that.
But this is a really great asset for students to be able to read on a tablet or a computer or something and to kind of maybe make it a little different than they experienced in the past. So it's a really good deal that you were able to negotiate with this company to provide this to all of us, really. Do we have adult books on there?
I didn't see anything really beyond about twelfth grade.
Might be good. Well, anyway, thank you. I hope a lot of people sign up and that we really show Myon that we're interested in their service. But thank you.
Is that a one-year grant?
It's one year, and it's through the end of July, so we've got two months, basically.
And the Books on the Bus will be visiting a lot of different areas in Garden City, the Lincoln Jones Zoo, Ayala Park, the swimming pool at Fenner Park, East Garden Village, Towns River View South, Farmland Road, H&amp;H Trailer Park, all at different times, different days. You just have to check the schedule, but they will be able to get around to a lot of areas in our community and really provide service to a lot of students without really leaving their neighborhood. So it's a wonderful thing to do. I also wanted to mention that one of the things that was in the weekly update was that Wheat Fields on Main was offering a program with Brighton Jewelry, which allowed people to, if they bought things, a bracelet, the half of the cost would be going to the USD four-five-seven School Foundation for Arts projects. So I thought that was a pretty nice community you all found and everything, that kind of something that we just talked about. So, and I'd also like to remind the board that our reorganization meeting is coming up at the first evening of July, the eighth of July. And we'll be doing an election of officers and some other board reorganizations. So please be thinking about that, and think of ways that you can serve the board and the district and the community. That's all I have. Does anyone else have anything they wanted to mention?
I just have a quick question for Dr. Carlin on recruitment. Are we doing good?
Yeah.
Just getting ready for your harvest time.
We've hired somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty to thirty-five, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of about fifty still on board. So we've got a lot of work left to do, but they're fairly evenly distributed, about twelve K-4, about twelve five-A, about twelve high school, and about twelve- about twelve high school and about twelve of Dr. Johnson's specialty. So, we've had a lot of math vacancies this year, so we're working real hard there. But we, we've cut the number in half. We've had about twelve positions come open. So, we're, we're battling through it and June will be pretty busy for us. We'll get around.
How are housing opportunities are getting better?
So far, right now, pretty good. But it's usually end of June to the end of July where that gets real challenging for folks. So, last year we were fortunate that we had, one of the hoteliers in town was really working with us on that people were coming in late, giving a really real reasonable weekly rate. And so, as, as new teachers arrived, they didn't feel pressured to just have to jump on something immediately. We had one of the hoteliers that just blew it to do a weekly rate for folks through the end of September, which gave them some flexibility. Nobody had to, nobody had to do it that long. But I think we had three or four people that, that spent two or three weeks in a hotel room and then they were able to find something. As you're aware, I always tell our, our new candidates, it's not that we don't have the kind of housing you're looking for. It's that the occupancy rate is so high, it's all a matter of timing. And so, if you can time it, you'll find what you want. But if you have to come in and make a decision within a couple of days, sometimes your choices aren't really great.
And we don't want someone to make a major decision and that's part of why they're not happy here. So, that's great. Was there something we can do with the hotels to, to help them do this again? Or you contacted them and make sure they're onboard for this?
I, I think they will because they're trying to add some extra space. So, I imagine they'll, they'll work with us.
Good. Well, thanks for your work. You know, we had the staff appreciation dinner and lunch at night too, more ago. One of the things that impressed me about that is that Garden City and especially our school district is really a great place to work. And you can really tell because a lot of the people who retired are going to come back anyway and work for us. And people who really stayed home or are going somewhere else are coming back to us. So, I think that's really telling. I appreciate everything that you do in personnel to, to make people feel welcome and to want to stay with us. We really need that, I think, too, so it's great to be able to.
You had a great example of that tonight with Coach Smith. He's a wonderful guy and we'd really like to just come back and share his talents with our kids.
Anything else? Our, our next board meeting will take place on Monday, June seventeenth, 2013, at six P.M. Here in this room. At this point, the motion to go to executive session.
Madam President, I make a motion to adjourn the executive session for discussion of matters on my line personnel with contractual obligations for thirty minutes until seven twenty-five.
Second, there's a second, there's a discussion. All in favor, please, Richard, any opposed?